Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 13, 2024 meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. I've got to ask everyone to take a moment. Please silence their cellphones and please note that this meeting is being recorded by FCTV. I'd like to introduce members of the board, starting with the audience's left. My far right is Jerry Patamus. He's an associate member. Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morse, currently serving as chair. Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member and serving our clerk. Scott Peterson, who is our vice chairman. Tony Pitrucci, who is an associate member. We're also joined this evening by Noreen Stockman, the town zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our recording secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing, rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. It can include an opinion in favor or opposition, or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair. Please come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the benefit of FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves and make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of three members, a simple majority, is required for the approval of a comprehensive permit. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Law Chapter 40A and B. First up on this evening's agenda is public comment. This public comment is reserved for anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. Does any member of the public wish to make a comment about something that is not specifically on this evening's agenda?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't understand what you said.
This is public comment for something that is not specifically on tonight's agenda. If you're here to speak on one of the two permits that we have, your public comment will be later. This is for anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Would you like to make a comment about something that's not on the agenda this evening? We have two continuations this evening. First up at 6:00 PM is Hearing 03824, West Falmouth Estates, LLC, 19 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, requesting a comprehensive permit to construct 24 single-family dwelling units, six of which will be affordable.
I do have a letter that was asked to be read into the record, to whom it may concern. Upon reviewing the site plans again for this 24-unit housing project, I would like to include these additional comments for consideration in denying this development. Under the exceptions list revised on May 3, 2024, Addendum C, Section 305-24B, "An street layout with width of 60 feet when a budding property not owned by the subdivision." The developer is requesting this section be waived. This waiver should not be approved. This would encroach upon my property line, and I will not sanction this. If the zoning board approves any portion of this waiver list, then the town is not for the taxpayer. Sincerely, Phyllis Littleford. And then there's another section to the letter, to whom it may concern. My name is Phyllis Littleford, and my daughter is Joy Littleford. We are the owners of 15 North Falmouth Highway, which is next door to the land of the proposed housing project. We are vehemently against this 24-unit housing project that is being proposed for development at 19 North Falmouth Highway. My family has owned our property for over 100 years. Our home, like most of the homes along North Falmouth Highway, was built around the early 1800s and is a vital part of historical North Falmouth. This historic district should be preserved as it is, and its charm should not be lost to urban development, especially a project of this magnitude. Our reasons for being opposed to this project are detailed below. In looking at the site plan for this development project, eight of the 24 proposed homes will be abutting my property. This is a major issue regarding the safety of my property, with specific concerns relating to trespassing or breaching of my property line by the occupants/owners of the proposed housing units. There is also a potential of future issues with the proposed septic tanks that would be coming in close proximity to my property as well. To prepare for the land for building these 24 homes at 19 North Falmouth Highway, it is my understanding that the developers would need to, quotations, "blast" several huge boulders located on the property to build a retaining wall. This blasting activity has the strong potential to severely affect the foundational and architectural integrity of mine and other historical homes in the vicinity and cause major damage given their significant age. Another area of concern is the increase in the amount of traffic that this neighborhood would contribute to. Most homes of the size of the proposed models for this project typically have two cars per household. That would be an increase of 48 cars traveling along North Falmouth Highway daily. This would be a significant increase in traffic along this section of the road, near the intersection of Tommy Landers Road, where there was no traffic light. As it stands, many cars traveling from Tommy Landers Road do not come to a complete stop at the red blinking light. There are... Oops, hold on. There are multiple accidents at this intersection annually. There is a major safety issue, especially during the summer when traffic surges. Often during the summer months, we have difficulty getting out of our own driveway due to increased traffic. A traffic study would be needed to be conducted to explore the potential impact of this housing project. Additionally, this development project would result in many species of local wildlife being uprooted in their habitat. Examples of the affected species are wild turkey, deer, coyote, and the New England cottontail rabbit, which is currently a vulnerable population that was considered to be listed under Endangered Species Act in 2006. In relation to the concern for the wildlife that would be affected by this project, it is my understanding that the developer was contacted by a local preservation group. This group offered the developer the purchase price of the property at 19 North Falmouth Highway, in addition to any costs associated with any investments already made related to this project, and the offer was refused. I implore the members of the Town of Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals to strongly take our concern into consideration and deny the development of this housing project. And that's what I have.
Good evening. Sir?
In total, I have four letters of comments, no letters of support, and two letters of opposition.
So I just wanted to respectfully ask the board for continuance from tonight's meeting.
Certainly. How much time are you looking for, sir?
Well, the dates either on... I think we've got July 18, if that's available. If not, July 25.
I defer to the zoning administrator. You're the conscious and keeper of the calendar.
So due to the board's heavy schedule and current cases scheduled, the date we've reserved next is August 1. Is we missing a week in July?
It's true. We're holidaying.
We get the fourth off.
We get the fourth off.
Yes.
Is that acceptable?
Without talking to the engineer, I'd like to... I'd say yes, it's acceptable if the engineer can be here. He couldn't be here tonight, nor the attorney. So can I call tomorrow and tell you if that's acceptable, or do I have to decide right now?
Well, so we have to announce a date and time tonight. So what we'll do is we'll schedule it for August 1, and if, as that date approaches, it doesn't work, we'll manage it then. But we're required to announce.
Okay. It may be acceptable. It might be totally acceptable. Thank you.
So is there a motion to continue to August 1?
So moved.
Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
At 6:00.
At 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Here.
Here at Town Hall. Any discussion needed on the motion? Before we announce the vote, I am going to ask for public comment, just in case there are some people who came here for that particular hearing. So all those in favor of the continuance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So this matter will be continued to August 1. I will ask if there's anyone here who'd like to make public comment on this application, they can do so now. Would anyone like to make a comment? Sir?
I have a question.
Do you want to just come up to the podium? Thank you very much.
My question was just simply about the letters that were received that you mentioned earlier.
Can we just have your name for the record?
Robert Lopes.
Thank you.
On North Falmouth Highway. Are they... Are these various letters available for view by the public?
Absolutely. Generally, the file is always available. It's a public document. It's available for review. They're generally scanned and posted on the webpage.
Oh, they are online as well?
Yes.
We do scan all the documents. The only thing we haven't posted are private letters. We do keep them in the file, but just to protect people's addresses, we haven't posted those.
They're available for you if you want to come upstairs. Thank you. Certainly.
So 7:00 and the 4th of July falls on a Thursday? Yay.
Lucky.
Yeah.
Would anyone else like to make a public comment on this application? Ma'am?
I'm just...
Would you just come up to the podium, please, and state your name for the record?
To this project, so I... Everybody probably is way ahead of where I am.
And what is your name, please?
Gail Coe.
Thank you.
But what I don't understand is with the population we have in Falmouth, we have... What we have is a big need for low-income housing, and I get that. And I'm not one of those people who says not in my backyard because I live right there, but I'm all for low-income housing. But how many of these units, four units, are low-income?
Six, 25%.
25%.
Okay. So when a builder wants to do a project like this, they... As long as they meet that 25%, they're then allowed to squeeze in... My understanding is they're then allowed to get rid of the lot restriction, because my understanding in Falmouth is you're supposed to have more than... I don't understand how 24 units are going in there, but any houses, like actual homes, it's not condos, right? These are not apartments. These are private homes.
What's proposed are, yes, single...
So 3/4 of these will be homes that'll sell for $700,000 or $800,000, I'm assuming? Something like that.
We're not in charge of marketing, but fair market value, yes. We can do that.
Okay. And those lots are going to be minuscule because they're allowing a few low-income housing units to go in.
The 40B process allows a developer to essentially bypass local concerns, that is, local regulations, until such time as a community reaches 10% of their housing inventory is deemed to be affordable, or if the community hits certain benchmarks in terms of production of affordable housing and has a plan in place.
So we can't say we want all these units to be low-income to approve this. We have to say, fine, we'll let you...
There's a whole procedure and process that's employed, ma'am, but this is the statute that the board is stuck with that has to apply with these developments. It allows a developer to put in high-density what is proposed. It would be permissible if the board finds it's acceptable.
And sharing septics and... Yep. And so it's...
It's a negotiation as to conditions, ma'am, but yes, what is proposed is in keeping with the state law.
There are no absolutes.
Yes. It's a proposal. It's nothing... Doesn't mean that it's going to pass, but what he's presenting is in accordance... The first step is that he has to get an approval from the state that this particular project is eligible and appropriate, and the state has given him that approval.
And we can't say... The town can't say, okay, but we want more low-income housing in this particular bill or whatever this is.
The hearings are all subject to negotiation.
Okay. Okay. I'm concerned, you know, I'm a neighbor... Well, I live down Burke Lane, and I'm concerned about the traffic, but I'm more concerned about environmental issues and overcrowding in the town and allowing these projects that only give such a small amount of housing for low income. That's my concern, because I know we need low-income housing, but I don't think we need more 800,000, $1 million houses on very small lots and sharing septics and, you know, and it's on a hill. My understanding is it's going to drain down, like there's a... It's not flat land. And Thomas Landers, that intersection is a nightmare. It would have to be changed, I guess. They have to. But anyway, okay, thank you. I think you answered my questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Of my concerns.
Any other member of the public wish to make a comment on this project this time? Podium is yours, ma'am.
It's kind of hard to hear. Is this on?
You can pull it down a little.
Pull it down? It's not going to amplify your voice. It's just going to, for the benefit of the FCTV viewers.
Okay. My name is Phyllis Menez Littleford. My letter was read. I did submit it earlier for the first meeting, but I didn't realize it had to specify that it be specifically read. However, I had some other questions regarding this development. First of all, the name West Falmouth Estates is very puzzling to me, because if this is North Falmouth, how can it be called West Falmouth Estates? One question. Are there any renderings of the proposed project yet? Unit 24, which is right on my property line, needs to be eliminated. It's too close to the line of my property. I don't want to see any trees or fences to disturb my view, nor a wall. The other problem that I have is rainwater that travels down in front of my home during a heavy storm. That water seems to have sort of a sudsy or foamy effect to it. I have no idea why it does that, and it goes into that catch basin. And there are times when the rain is so heavy that it wells down in front of my long driveway, which almost meets Thomas Landers Road. So there's an issue here. As I said, I'm also concerned about all of the historical waivers being requested. It is ludicrous. I had to abide by all the historical policies and guidelines whenever I had to do anything to my home. And for any exceptions to be made by the board for this particular project, I just don't think there should be any exceptions to this. And this would be stripping the identity of the neighborhood. Those are just some of the additional concerns I have regarding this project. And as I said, to approve of all of the historical waivers just does not make sense to me when everyone else has to abide by the strict guidelines by it, and whenever any work or anything is done at the Town Hall. So those are a couple of my concerns. And I couldn't quite hear when the next continuation date is, because it's... Everyone's speaking so softly.
August 1.
August 1.
6:00 PM, right here.
Pardon?
6:00 PM, right here.
So just bypass July, right?
We're meeting... We get the 4th off, and every other meeting's already... Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, which property is yours if you were facing the front of the... Will you be the one on the right?
My home is next door, directly next door to that property. I'm the abutter.
Yeah. Thank you.
So please take these concerns into consideration. And I would also like to ask the members of the board to walk that property, just to see what it looks like, just to take a look to see how it would look and how it would affect me and maybe some others across the street. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to make a public comment on this project? Got a brief comment here to make, sir?
I've got one comment. Just one. Like the multifamily zone throughout the town of Falmouth, which is six units per acre in a business one, two, or three, we were careful not to exceed six units per acre, which is all around the town. In fact, as you know now, we've even got some densities that are way beyond six units per acre. But in numerous places in town, I mean, too much to even mention, six units per acre for multifamily housing is a standard, and some of that stuff has got a commercial inclusion. So we did not go over six units per acre, so that even though this wasn't Zone B1, B2, B3, and it didn't have a non-conforming pre-existing use that could lend itself toward that, we were very careful to stand at six units per acre. So we're very similar to other parts of town. That's it. Thank you.
Noreen, do you have any suggestions to the applicant about additional materials that might want to be provided, just to keep this moving along between now and August?
So I guess just if there's any plan changes that you're looking to make, you know, you could send those along ahead. I think you've gotten some feedback from the board at the last meeting and heard from a couple of abutters.
So this matters continue to August 1, 6:00 PM here at Town Hall. So this is the danger of specifically noticing hearings at times, so we can pick up open meeting. Our next hearing is not noticed till 8:00 PM. That will be Acapescot Gardens, 04224. We have no new hearings this evening. Under open meeting, what are we tabling?
We're not. So we have Mr. Solomondos here to discuss his changes with Josiah Path, and you have Town Council, so...
Minutes, minute-wise, I'm saying.
Minutes 16 and 30.
Tabling or voting?
Voting.
Okay. Is everyone had opportunity to review the minutes of May 16 and 23? Are there any comments or additions? Excuse me, May 30, not 23. 5:30 and 5:16. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as published?
So moved.
Mr. Fineran, second. Ms. Murphy, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Those minutes are approved. We'll be tabling 5:23 and 6:06. Just go in order. We have discussion of safe harbor provisions and procedures under 40B with a vote anticipated. So we have Town Council joining us this evening to discuss.
Maura O'Keefe, Town Council. I am here to talk to you about safe harbor. I hope you all had a chance to read the memo that I sent to all of you. It is not attorney-client privilege. It is intended to be shared with the public, with anyone who is interested in it, because this is important information for everybody to understand about an important law for the creation of affordable housing here. So I'm just going to give you a couple of highlights, and then we can discuss questions if you have them later. So there are a couple of things that I do want to discuss in particular. And first and foremost, the reason why I'm even here is because there's a possibility that the town could hit safe harbor very soon. And it's only a possibility. It doesn't happen until it happens, but I wanted to be able to provide you with some background information for when it does happen, because when it happens, it happens quickly, and you have to know what it means for your work that you do here. So when I talk about safe harbor, what I mean here is that there's a possibility that the town is going to achieve one of its statutory minimum goals in the creation of affordable housing. And the one that we're looking at is it's the big-ticket item under Chapter 40B. Hopefully, in the very near future, the town is going to achieve 10% statutory goal of the creation of affordable housing. And what that means is that 10% of its housing stock will be deemed affordable by the HLC. Once the town reaches this 10% goal, it gives this board some freedom, some relief from the onerous constraints of 40B that you all know too well. So what does safe harbor do, actually? What it does is it allows this board to review comprehensive permits without having... Well, without having the hack strike down everything that you put into the decision, essentially. What it means is that the board can decide to... It can decide to deny a comprehensive permit, or it can put conditions on a permit. And if we're in safe harbor, the denial or the conditions are not reviewable by the hack. They simply don't have jurisdiction to review the decision. So that's... It's an important goal, and it has some pretty significant applications, because you all know the problems that every ZBA has with trying to put together a comprehensive permit and a decision that makes sense for the community, only for the hack to turn around and redline it. So one of the things that safe harbor also does, that's, I think, the big one. The other thing that it does is that it still permits the board to grant waivers if there's a determination that a particular project is in line with the community. You don't lose the good parts of 40B. You really just are free from some of the onerous constraints. So what doesn't safe harbor do? This is just as important to understand what maybe some misconceptions about safe harbor are. And something that is important for you to understand is that it doesn't stop the applications from coming in. People can still submit 40B applications for a comprehensive permit, and the timelines are the same, the rules are the same. So people can still submit an application under 40B and ask for waivers. It just means that you don't have to grant them. The other thing that safe harbor does not do, it does not end the need for the creation of affordable housing. There is still an ongoing dire need for affordable housing in the town. It is a significant cornerstone of the select board's policies that it issues, and it is still something that does need to be addressed, and this board is a vital cog in the creation of affordable housing. It is going to give you freedom, though, to work with the developers to make it something that fits within the community. It also will dissuade certain developers from trying to force this board's hand. It should allow for a greater latitude of collaboration between the board and applicants to be able to create affordable housing that is conducive to the needs of the community and fit within the community. So lastly, what I wanted to talk to you about was timing. I started this conversation by saying that there's the possibility that the town will reach safe harbor. It is just that. It hasn't transpired yet, and the reason why I am here and why it's a possibility and why it's close is because of 375 Sandwich. Now, if, if, because no one's made a decision yet... Now, if, if, because no one's made a decision yet, if a comprehensive permit is issued by this board, then when the comprehensive permit decision is filed, those units will become eligible for the SHI. And however many units are in the final decision will likely put the town over that 10%. Now, of course, I say words like "if" and "possibility" because you haven't approved anything yet, and there is no decision, and it hasn't been filed. But if it does happen, it will happen relatively soon, in the next couple of months, and I do want you to be prepared for that. So the timing of that decision and that comprehensive permit is crucial. Once that happens, part of what this board will need to do is, and I've outlined this in my memo, safe harbor isn't a goal line, and once you cross it, that's the end of the story. Safe harbor is always in flux. So going forward, once we've hit that 10% mark, there's always the possibility that units will come off the SHI and go back on the SHI, and come back off and go back on. So what that means is that the number, the SHI number, will have to be certified every time you get an application for 40B, which means that town staff, the housing coordinator in particular, who's the direct liaison with HLC, will be in constant communication with the HLC to make sure that, to make sure that this board knows whether the town is in safe harbor. Once in safe harbor, what will happen procedurally is that the application will come in, will contact the HLC to get the most recent numbers, will alert the board as to whether or not a safe harbor is available. And then at the opening of the hearing, the board will need to vote on whether to invoke safe harbor. The board does not have to invoke safe harbor, even if it's in safe harbor. But if you want to invoke safe harbor, you have to vote to invoke it at the beginning of the hearing. And what the vote will look like is you have to make a determination about whether the board can deny an application for a comprehensive permit as consistent with local needs. And so the motion would be that the board may deny the application as consistent with local needs. That is wording from the statute that I recommend be used. I can write that down so that you have it all the time. But what that means is it is mirroring the language of the regulation, and it stands for the proposition that in safe harbor, this board has the authority to deny the comprehensive permit because you've met the statutory affordable housing creation goals.
Yeah, just one clarification on that. The invocation, that's not a denial at that point. It's just putting the applicant on notice that we could deny.
That's right.
Okay.
It is not a denial. That motion simply means that you have the right to safe harbor. It is not a motion to deny the project. For every comprehensive permit application that you get in, they all have to be accepted, and they all have to go through a hearing process. So what all the vote is doing is it's allowing you for, at the end of the hearing, to deny or place conditions without that denial or set of conditions being reviewed by the hack. Otherwise, everything else stays the same. So, other questions? Yes?
Gary, I saw you first. I'm sorry.
What happens if we have, which we probably will, a couple of ongoing 40Bs? We hit safe harbor. Are those 40Bs still reviewed in the same light?
So the safe harbor status, the timelines are very concise under the regulations. Safe harbor status is established when HLC tells us it is, as of the date, as of certain dates. So I'm going to use 375 Sandwich just as an example, because it's the easiest one to If the 300 or so units are approved with conditions or just approved, and the comprehensive permit decision is filed within the 40 days, the date of eligibility for safe harbor is the date that the CP is filed. What that means for any of the other pending applications is it only impacts implications filed after that date. Any applications that have already been filed by the time the decision for 375 is filed, those are not subject to the safe harbor, and they have to be heard as regular 40B projects.
Thank you.
I hope I made that. It's, there's a lot of moving pieces.
Would there ever be a reason for us not to take the safe harbor vote, from your perspective?
Yes, absolutely. I think that if you, if you get a project in front of you that is just everything that you want it to be, and the developer has presented a project that isn't going to create a problem for wastewater, and the Conservation Commission has weighed in, and there aren't any problems there, it's a non-problematic development. I know that they're far and few and far between. They do happen. And a lot of what hap, and what, I think what's going to happen here is they'll come through essentially as local, local action units. They'll be vetted before they come to this board, so that this board really just has to make sure that the work's been done and make sure it suits, it suits your expectations. But it is entirely possible, especially for smaller projects, to come forward that aren't problematic, and that you can just grant the waivers that are being requested because they're not onerous and they don't cause problems for the wastewater system? Something like that. I don't, I don't see it, I don't, I, I think, once safe harbor is achieved, a developer who has a problematic development isn't going to bring that forward. They'll, they'll think twice before even submitting the application, knowing that you can just say no to it.
Thank you. Tony?
I just, thank you. I just want to make sure I understand. So if 20 developers pile on right now, before we reach safe harbor, they stay on the list after, let's say, that Savage Road is achieved, and that comprehensive permit has been filed? Let me just go back for a second. When you say comprehensive permit is filed, when you say filed, filed where? At the registry? Filed at the town clerk's office?
Town clerk's office.
So, once that's filed, if it's approved, once that's filed, theoretically, given the number, we would be at theoretically, safe harbor. Somebody then, once it's filed at town clerk's office, somebody in the town then has to do something. In other words, somebody has to go to the state and say, "We've got this. Have we reached our safe harbor?"
Right.
Several weeks later, or whenever it is, somebody says something at the state and says, "Yes, we agree you have." But until that happens, could we get another 10 40Bs in before the state says, "Oh, you reached it?" Or when does that date? Is the file date at the town clerk, the date that safe harbor begins?
Yes.
And we're just waiting formally for the state to say, "Okay"?
No, it's the date that it's filed.
All right, that's great. Wonderful. But we could have 10 pile-on right now, and that would be devastating.
You could.
For, to work. Now...
Yeah, I don't see...
There is, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no. And I want to say this because I want to get it said aloud, so I know what's correct and what's not correct. We are not a policy-creating or a policy implementation board. We strictly apply zoning bylaws using the best of our ability and judgment to do so. Are we in any way, as a board, obligated by any other board to approve something that we just don't see as appropriate? Such as a local initiative?
What's the connection with being a policy board?
In other words, the town may have a policy that they want to do, more affordable housing. They want to get to 20%.
Mm-hmm.
Not a bad idea, but I'm just saying, they might want to get 20%. But for some reason, after we've reached safe harbor, we, in our infinite wisdom, say, "Hmm, I don't think that's a good project. It doesn't fit right. There's something about nitrogen load, theoretically coming from something created from the town, that wouldn't happen." I mean, that wouldn't happen. But we're not obligated to approve anything once we reach safe harbor. We could say no on anything.
That's true. You are all political appointees, and there is a policy of the select board and a dire need for affordable housing. So saying no to everything isn't necessarily a good idea.
Look, folks, I'm just asking the question because I don't understand.
But I do, I do want to make clear, though, that, yes, you, you have, this board has a lot more discretion to say no. And there's a lot more onus now on developers to bring good projects. And that also, that also applies to whatever internal vetting goes on before you see a project. You know, it's incumbent for everybody to put forth good projects in order to achieve the goals. What's not going to be, what's not going to go over well is simply rubber stamping everything with a no.
So, excuse me, I just, I'm an associate member, so I don't get to vote on everything. I can try and build consensus amongst other board members to vote, certainly to find certain things. What I worry about, because, and I don't want this pressure on me, is that what I might believe is appropriate may not sit well with those who appoint me, and then I might become unappointed.
That's always a risk. I mean...
Yeah, but for rational reasons, for rational reasons, if my opinion, my infinite wisdom as a, let's say, as a former developer, as a businessperson, who sees something that just does not fit right, and I attempt to build consensus amongst other board members by having this discussion, and somebody doesn't like that in another board, they might say, "Uh-huh, we don't like that Mr. Petrucci, and we're going to get him off because he is in our way." That could happen.
That's politics. That, no one can shield you from that.
But I'm not a politician. I wasn't elected.
So I, I understand that, and I, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
My best advice to you, though, is to vote your conscience, to take in the facts and the evidence that are before you, and evaluate it in the best way that you can with the tools that you have available to you, and vote the way that you want to. Even though you are a political appointee, and there are these policy goals about what the town needs as far as affordable housing goes, if you have a project that you don't want to vote for, then don't vote for it. And if it means that the people who appoint you don't like that, you don't get reappointed, again, that's politics.
Just for the record, I like doing what's right for the community.
Understood. Thank you. But that's an excellent question.
Council, I've got a couple of questions, and this is not stump town council. Do you know how many communities have actually achieved safe harbor?
I did see a list recently. It's not a lot. I, I am going to, my number's going to be off, but it wasn't...
I'm not yet.
20 to 30.
So, let's just say hypothetically, it's now August 31st. We have hit safe harbor for one reason or the other. We have a 40B that is coming in that may not be as, it's checking off enough boxes that I don't necessarily think it would be a denial, but would we have to invoke the safe harbor vote if we wanted to condition things that a developer may not want? So, for example, we could say, "Yeah, you want to put in 10 units on this particular parcel? It's out in the middle, it's sewed, it's in the right area, it's not so, the density is not really problematic, but we're concerned that, we don't think that 25% is enough. We'd like you to make 60% affordable." Is that a condition that we could then impose, or do we have to invoke the safe harbor vote at the beginning of the hearing to then impose it?
You have to take the safe harbor vote every time.
Okay.
My recommendation is that any time, once we hit, once we tell you that we're at that 10%, that you vote to invoke it every single 40B.
And I think that was the question earlier, but I don't think that was quite the answer that I heard, but I was, could be, that could just be me.
I did say you don't have to invoke it.
Okay.
But my advice is invoke it every time, and you don't have to use it.
That's, all right, that's, in terms of this, because it's still going to be appealable, it's just an appeal now directly to Superior Court. The hack is not involved.
Right.
So is the standard essentially just going to be abusive discretion? Or is there any case law on this?
I haven't read any cases on it. Doesn't mean there's, there isn't case law on it.
Would you recommend just treating it like a regular special permit application, that if, whatever we condition, just, there needs to be some rational findings and reason behind the condition?
Yes. I mean, it would be very much like an administrative appeal, so arbitrary and capricious. I also think that there might be an argument that the denial was not consistent with local needs if there is an ongoing established policy that affordable housing is an ongoing goal. So, and this is why caution against just rubber stamping a no on everything.
Oh, I don't want to say no. I want to just say...
I just have to say it.
More affordable units if there's a fight one coming in. I think that's the...
I think that's a perfectly reasonable, reasonable condition.
Mark, and then Frank.
Isn't what we're dealing with tonight a vote on a possible stay, for want of a better term, of applications? A pause?
I'm going to ask for Norine about the words "vote anticipated" tonight.
So, I don't know if Maura wants to address that.
So I, I have, we've had a conversation that there's no stay available. We're not going to qualify for it.
All right.
Nice to hear.
So, at this time, I, I am, though, in constant communication throughout, through this period where, again, there's, there are the ifs and the possibility, and I know that there is stuff coming down the road. If there's a possibility of a stay, then I'll, we'll make that known, and I'll come back to walk you through the vote. A stay is temporary. In my conversations with the HLC, they, they don't get requests for it because it's not easy to hit. It's, it's, part of the reason why it's hard to invoke is because it's so temporary that you have to catch it at the right time, and it goes away just as soon as you can invoke it anyway. So I think most communities just sort of power through a little crest when they get busy, through to the point where they're not entitled to the state anyway. Right now, there's no possibility of a stay, just doing the math right now as we're talking about it.
Just for the purpose of the audience or anyone on the board who may not understand is that if, there is a provision in the CMRs that allows municipality to, not refuse, is to stay the opening of a new 40B if there are an aggregate number of units under consideration before the zoning board. Just to simply say, "We're too busy. We're just pushing this down the road for a period of time."
And obviously, I'm a little short on information here, but I thought this originally was supposed to be about a stay because we have so many applications. And if what we have in the hopper, so to speak, is enough to get us over into safe harbor, why did they even write this stay part into the law?
The stay is not, so it's two different issues. The stay is about opening new 40B hearings.
I understand that.
The safe harbor is about the...
I understand that, too. But we were initially told that we had the possibility of a stay because we have so many units in the hopper, and that seems to have been gone away without any notice to meet, anyway.
Well, I think the stay provision, from my reading, was that you have 300 or more units and three or more comprehensive permits.
Which we have both.
Which, by my count, right now, we have achieved both of those... By my count, right now, we have achieved both of those and all those hearings are currently open. But I guess the question is whether the future applications will coincide with hearings being open or not. So I think right now where we have three that are open exceeding 300 units, that does meet the actual threshold, correct?
I'd have to look at it.
Okay.
When, when I did the calculations that you asked me to do, we were not in a stay provision.
Because we, yeah, we have-
I'm completely confused as to how that could not be.
We are.
And I think-
I think we are. I think it's 300 units and it's in a time period too.
But the fourth one comes in is the one we-
It's 300 units, but it's going to fall off very quickly once the CP is filed. If a CP is given.
Currently, we have 300 plus 24 plus eight.
Twelve.
Plus 12. So I, I don't understand how we can't be in that window.
I guess that would be a request of the board potentially for you to review that.
So I, I did say that it's an ongoing issue that is constantly being reviewed and if we hit a, a calculation where the stay is available, I will let staff know. Right now, it's not available.
Are they just not answering us to run the clock out?
Sorry?
Are they not answering us to run the clock out?
Who's "they"?
Mass Housing?
No.
They're not answering us?
I, Mass Housing doesn't have anything to do with this.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask where the information comes from?
Where the information comes from? So it's all, it's, it's really about timing and the opening and closing of the hearings. Right now, there, there may be a stay available. There's nothing for you to vote on tonight. So I don't, I don't know why the agenda says that. There was never anything for you to vote on. There is no stay available right now as we stand. There may be something in the next weeks, but it, it's not, it hasn't come to fruition. If there is a stay available, I will make sure that you can take advantage of it if it's, if it's there.
So just, again, we're not voting, I'm just going to give a straw poll. I think I would personally love to be able to not say no, to postpone something given our current workload.
I'm with you.
Definitely.
Is that the general, if it's, if we can, if we can invoke it. We're not voting, but that's just, just to share with you as Town Council, what the board's desire was given the current workload.
I would agree with that, but I think what's being said is that we are in a situation now where if we get another 40B application tomorrow, we could take a vote on it, possibly.
Not, not right now, maybe-
Oh, when it's filed and be, at the time we open the hearing.
Maybe.
Yes, maybe.
You might be able to, you might be able to vote on the next hearing. So the stay, so the stay provision is all dependent on whether a hearing for a particular application is open or not. Whereas the statutory safe harbors are more about when they're marked, the timings are marked by when the permits are filed or when the building permits are issued or when orders of the court are issued. So there are two, they, they're, they do different things and they mark time in different ways. Right now, there's no stay provision for you to vote on because, because you're on the verge of getting rid of a very large comprehensive permit and it may be that by the opening of the next hearing, you're still considering 375 sandwich. If there's an overlap there, it will allow you for a small few week stay provision, which you can certainly take advantage of.
We'll take it.
I'm sorry, I was just, get the consensus of this side of the board about, based on workload, what your feelings are. If that was available, is that something the board would be looking to?
Regardless of workload, the stay is beneficial to the board. I believe it allows us time to work on the comprehensive plans that are in place and those comprehensive plans, due to the timing that they have when they file, they have certain benefits and the stay can allow us the time to review those in a different fashion at a later date, so.
To do our job well, we need time. There's just too much on our plates right now.
I think, I think the position of the board's been fairly communicated.
That's great. I will make sure that, that we're keeping an eye on when, when applications that are both currently in hearing and the ones coming up are, fall within that, that stay and I'll make sure to be able to walk you through that so that you can vote that.
Frank, I know you've been very patiently waiting to ask a question.
Actually, you asked the question I was going to ask anyways, I think, but that's fine. But just to clarify, if we have a 40B application and we are in a position to invoke safe harbor and we do, and then we either deny that application or we approve it with conditions that the developer doesn't like, that triggers an appeal to Superior Court. Or Land Court?
Or Land Court.
Land Court, okay. And there, the, the procedure is a hearing de novo? Or is it just an on the record hearing?
I don't know the answer to that, but I can find that out. I don't know.
Well, it's, I think we should know that because it could, it would be important as to how we prepare the record and our findings.
Would you do it differently?
Well, not differently, but we might make sure we've crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is, that's all.
As Town Council, I recommend that you do that anyway.
Well, we do, we try, but sometimes it doesn't happen.
But I will, I will look into the issue of de novo review.
Would you want to, Mr. Chairman, just for the audience and maybe some of the board members, explain the difference?
Sure, so sometimes hearings, once they go from a border commission or administration to the Superior or Land Court, there are two different ways that the court can review the decision below. De novo review means that they start all over. So they take all the evidence, they hear the testimony and then they essentially stand in the shoes of this board and make a new decision. With some caveats, they will give great deference to findings of fact of the board, but otherwise it's a, it's a new review. On the record is they take the administrative record for the board and it is really just making new conclusions of law. So they'll evaluate the record as it is and accept it and then just make a determination about whether the law was applied properly.
They make that decision whether, how they're going to do it?
I don't know how they're going to do it, but I'll, I'll find-
Okay, that, yeah, I guess, you know.
Can you explain in detail, like if we do the big project that we have now and Norine files it on a Friday, when do we fill out the application for safe harbor?
So it's not an application. It's a great question because we went back and forth with HLC about how, like what, do we get a piece of paper? What does it look like? Is someone going to come here with balloons? Like how, what, how do we know? Because it is exciting. And it's, it's really disappointing, actually. They're going to send us an email and attached to the email will be a spreadsheet with a little number down the bottom that says what percentage of housing units are affordable. Right now, we're at like 9.9 something percent. Actually, that's too high. I think it's like 9.85 or something like that. So down the bottom in a very tiny number, it will say 10 point something percent.
And how long after Norine files will that email come in?
Time period.
We're going to call them and we're going to say Phil.
Within a few days?
And, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and it, it's retroactive. It goes back to the-
To that day, okay.
But Phil knows, Phil knows. We've, we've been talking with Phil DiMartino at the state.
Who's Phil?
He's at the-
Phil DiMartino.
Our, our buddy Phil, he's our buddy now that we're close-
Mr. DiMartino.
To 10 percent. He's going to expect the call because he knows that this is, it's important to everybody, but it's important.
Just one more, from a process based perspective. Where you listed the most common ways to achieve safe harbor. We have the 10 percent and we're tracking that. Is, is somebody else tracking the 1.5 percent of the municipality's total land area or over the last 12 months, the 2 percent of the total year round housing? There's a bunch of criteria here that's all done in math. And I'm not sure, we're all focused on the 10 percent. I just don't want to miss anything else that might have triggered the same event, so.
They are-
Are you confident that we have all of these criteria that-
So we look at, we look them all. The land mass is hard in your family because there's a lot of, there's a lot of available land that isn't covered by any units. And so it, it really screws with that, the denominator. So that is something that gets checked every once in a while, but isn't, it's not really attainable anytime soon. The other ones are based upon the housing production plan and so they are, they're temporary. You can do them for one or two years depending on a percentage, a smaller percentage of what you've achieved. But we had, unfortunately, we had a little lapse between our last certified housing production plan and our current one and it, it did mess with the numbers a little bit. It didn't matter because we, we have so much in the hopper that we kept chugging along towards 10 percent, but those HPP based safe harbors weren't available to us for a little bit, for a little bit of time. But, I mean, we're a small amount of time and we passed right by it anyway.
I'm sorry, this is state law and maybe I'm foolish to apply logic to it, but when we have in the hopper enough to get us over our 10 percent, how can it be that we're not eligible for this stay provision? And then secondly, I mean, if that's the case, why was this carrot dangled in front of us in the first place?
They have to be out of the hopper and filed.
Well, I think the other part-
But we have, we have three filed.
The other unusual circumstance is that the stay applies to a very single, unique circumstance that almost no one ever sees. You have to have more than 300 units and you have to have three projects or more.
But we have, we, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time keeping up with, with, with the logic here, but we have more than 300 units and we have three projects and they will get us over our 10 percent.
Right, but I think-
So why did they put this stay provision in there?
Who's "they"?
Whoever wrote the 40B law, why is, I mean, hasn't been adequately-
I'm not sure you understand what I've said to you tonight, to the board, but it's possible that the stay is available and we're keeping an eye on it. Today, it's not available, but it's-
Why?
Because the math isn't there and you're not voting on anything tonight. There's no application before you, but we're, I'm-
Hold on, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to keep up here.
I know.
But if we have enough in the hopper, we have the three projects that Norine specified, we have over 300 and close to 340 units, I just don't understand why.
I think what you're not understanding is that I may very well come back at the next meeting and say, you have it.
But nothing has changed between now and the next meeting.
Not, not tonight.
Well, we don't have a fourth application that's been filed at this point, correct?
So-
So there's nothing, there's nothing to stay.
Yes, we do.
It's once-
We do.
That's on the floor.
But it's, it's, you may, it may be available at the next hearing that you open. I'm just saying it's not available right now. So I don't think you need to keep laboring that.
But if the fourth one is here now-
Is it available tomorrow or can it be available Monday?
So you invoke it on the, on, the day that the next hearing is open. So what I'll do is I'll look when the next hearing, the next 40B is going to be open and do the math. I just haven't done that because it's not available right now. So I don't, I don't think I'm telling you that you, it's not available. In fact, I know that I didn't say that. What I'm saying is that it's not available right now and I'm going to continue to look at it. You, you may very well be voting on it at your next hearing, next time you open a hearing. Do you understand?
Any additional questions? Alright, thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you.
Before we move off it, since it's properly noticed, a little discussion on the, what's been explained from Town Council? Does the board have a position one way or the other about invocation going forward? Or?
You're starting on this end?
Just asking if, if we get to safe harbor, what is the, the board's general feelings about invoking?
For the, right this minute, we need some space to do our work well. The sooner we can invoke a stay to give us a little extra room, I think we should do so. When safe harbor is achieved, alright, I would like this board to be able to shape any further applications that come in that would be in our infinite wisdom, more beneficial to the community, the surrounding community they're in. So I'd like to see the stay as soon as possible. I'd like to see us invoke safe harbor when we can and then be able to shape the outcome of those hearings a little bit more sharply.
Scott?
That's, said very well. I, you know, we're struggling with all of these new developments that are producing nitrogen loading into sensitive areas of which the town then has to step up and potentially mitigate with millions of dollars and we've really had no bullet in our gun to stop any of that. So I think to Tony's point, having the stay, making sure that obviously safe harbor, then the stay, that we need that, quite honestly. Otherwise, we're just getting overrun with these things.
Suzanne?
I still didn't understand the explanation on why we can't have the stay now because we do qualify now and I don't understand that at all.
I have a follow up to her question. So if we hit the three, but we don't really hit it till we get to four, when that, the application comes in and that hearing opens and we vote for stay, does that mean that that person has to just go away?
So it's my understanding, again, this is like high tide, full moon, once every 50 year type of thing.
Yeah, but we're dealing with-
Is that the stay is only effective for the amount of time that that hearing is still in place. So what happens is my understanding is that once a hearing of the three closes and you no longer have that scenario where you're exceeding 300 units in three cases, you're now back open in business. So-
We're talking weeks.
It's a, it's a timing issue.
We should use the stay.
I'm sorry, I just don't understand this. We got the 300 plus, we got the 10 percent.
She's saying we have, right now. One of them is up to be, we're, we're out of time.
But it's not as of yet.
No, it's not as of yet, that's why I wish we had the stay right now.
It seems to me that there's a window, however small, that we could benefit from-
We're losing time, you are right.
That where, it's just, it wasn't adequately explained to me and now go elsewhere for-
Regarding the safe harbor provisions, I think invoking at the beginning of every hearing, any 40B coming forward would be beneficial. It would allow us to impose reasonable conditions, reduce density, to be a little bit more in keeping with neighborhoods or in keeping with the butter concerns if needed, to impose conditions that will address nitrogen, make sure that we're not eroding our natural environment in addition to require additional or higher percentages of affordable housing in accordance with the stated goals of the town as well as the board's selectmen. So I think invoking going forward is just policy wise, if we reach safe harbor, wise.
I think we understand all that and I think the abundance of the information we were given tonight was about that, but there's a little dearth of information on this stay and I'm sorry, I remain confused and I believe Suzanne does as well and Tony's face says the same thing.
No, I, I think the best thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the best thing is not to beat this particular part of it to death tonight because I think by next meeting, we probably will know more. That's what I heard tonight. I, as one member, am willing to wait that one week. I'd like it just to be done right now, as you would, but it's not going to happen and that's just the way it is.
Frank?
Well, we can invoke the stay unless the applicant that we're staying is here in the room. So that's the reason. But I, I would vote for a stay if we had the opportunity.
I can't add anything to this robust discussion.
Moving on, the number three on open meeting, we have applicant 05020 at Al Josiah Path West Falmouth- West Falmouth requesting an insubstantial change with a vote anticipated. Thank you for your patience. Old school.
Old school. You might want to pull a chair up, maybe that would help.
I used to be a-
That'll work.
This might be the best way to go, not put it in the back afterwards.
This is a-
It's just when you're away from the microphone, FCTV can't capture your voice.
You should put the chair beside the thing, the podium lectern to your right. That way you can-
Yeah, there you go.
Beside, yeah, even beside it where you can point at it and still talk into the microphone.
Oh, you put it there?
Oh, great. There you go. She's the best, isn't she?
My name is Mike Solomon, GM of the Village of Brick Hill LLC, and we're looking for, wanted to change some lot lines so I, to accommodate additional open space, and we're going to create three guest parking spaces, and I think make it a better project. We don't increase the bedroom count, we don't increase the number of homes, we're just going to make some of these a little bit more space in between. Oh, I'm sorry. So we've created, I've taken, well, it's hard to do it from here, but if this, I'm taking these two lots, and I'm creating a third lot here in the middle. And we're taking what, this is three, I'm going to use street addresses rather than lot numbers, okay? This is three Josiah Path, it's 4,000 square feet, and it is very tight in this area here because of the drainage easement that we found later, we uncovered, that was overgrown and was, was maintained by the town but lost its maintenance over the years. It was done, it was taken in the late 1950s and actually built in 1960, all right, but it seemed to have overgrown, and when we got in there, we found it, and then there was, they, they found the, they found the easement, and it wasn't part of the original project. So at the time, we moved, we crushed these lots in here, so this left my smaller slot, 4,100 square feet, which is street address, three Josiah Path. So we've got these two homes, because when building these, in construction, you usually skip each one, all right, and you don't do one right next to the other. This is two, it's, it's a very tight lot. So what we took, I came in here, and we had this large lot over here, which these were a culmination, we gave up three, four additional homes here. We originally came in with this project at 32 homes, and we now have 27, oh, 28, excuse me, we have 28 homes. So this became larger lots in this area here. So essentially, what we're doing is creating three lots out of these two big lots, and that's the result that we have here. We have the open space lot that still remains 18,700 square feet. That doesn't change. We changed that lot line to just level it off, but we still maintain the same square footage. Then we have that lot there, and that is a new, I'm sorry, I'm not used to this, forgive me. Okay, this is, this is 18, this will become 18 Josiah Path. It's still a large lot, it's 17,000 square feet, but I want to keep it that big and keep this away from the Denolans. We've become very close friends, they're my neighbors next door, next door. I play golf with, with their sons, and we've maintained that, that distance in the back. We've taken part of that lot and part of 20, which, and we've, I don't know how to, I don't know how to move it, but I'm sorry.
Which one do you mean, 20?
Great, thank you. And we've created lot, a new lot, 20, and this would, this would come out with 9,000 square feet. So this would be the actual substitute for the 4,000 square foot lot that we had at three Josiah Path.
Eliminating three?
I don't know. Clarification.
And that would leave us still with lot 22, which would become 6,000 square feet. And I feel that this is a much better project with this in, without squeezing those initial units in there. And we have the same number, the same number of bedrooms, and the same number of buildable lots, and we have 4,000 additional, 4,100 square feet additional open space, which I plan to use as plantings and, and guest parking.
No putting green?
No putting green, sir, no putting green. I could use it.
Sounds like it.
I, I don't know, do you have any questions? And I know that's pretty shot, I don't even want to begin, I'm really confused if I go with lot, with, there's a significant, these are lot numbers, okay, and then there's street numbers. And this has all been verified, Scott, Slaughter.
So, Noreen, I believe just the standard about substantial versus insubstantial is not triggered based on what's proposed. There's no increase, there's no bedroom increase, there's no unit increase, it's just kind of an administrative shuffling of lot sizes. So does the Board, is there anything?
I was confused at first, but I think this is definitely an improvement. Does everybody's lot line have to shift?
No, no.
I mean, I don't understand if the first one is 4,100, you can't just say, "Now it's 4,700." Don't you have to take that out of the next lot?
No, I took it out of-
Aggregates?
What happened is, what we, what I did was, what we did was, this lot here, it goes on the starting line here, it's, it's big.
Right.
Okay, and this was like 22,000 square foot lot. And what I did was, we took something out of here, or we took 5,000 or 6,000 out of here, and 4,000 out of this one.
Okay.
So, and then we put the lot up in here. This one stays a lot, okay, it still stays here, but it stays open space. And then we, we can, we have, I have a one-car garage here, makes sense, I have a one-car garage on this, and I have a one-car garage on this, and one. Most, 75% of my homes have two-car garages and two parking spaces. Even the two bedrooms have four parking spaces per lot. But this one here, right here, because it's tight, I had, I had the one-car garages that I have six different designs. So, and it's unfortunate, but that's where it sweeps the men, and that's, that's, that's what happens. So this really does, it's, you know, it just makes the free additional parking spaces there. You never know, you know, you have one outside, one inside, there's a guest that comes in for one of these houses when you first come in. We have additional, there's a kiosk that we have in here, which became a mechanical room, which is well, it was going to be a bus stop, but we turned it into the mail kiosk, and then we put a mechanical room in the back because of, we did the clean tube D-9 system that the Board requested we do. And we, and we put this whole system in underground here. Here's the tanks. And actually, there was a field here, that's all gone, that whole thing is no longer. And I put a new innovative system, and we're only using half of the cul-de-sac now for my septic field, for my actual lines. So that one's, so we pump up to here, so we can further away, the, the, this field here, originally this was a field. So now we have all this, like, that will forward.
We want you further away from Long Pond, so that's-
I understand that. Makes you better, better impression.
Just, not a criticism, I'm just curious, is there any reason why you didn't shift that Unit 1 a little further off the road, just for aesthetics?
This just came in, we, it would have been-
It's already built.
Oh, it's already, yeah, okay.
It's already built.
It was already out.
The red indicates the ones that are already built?
It's also affordable.
Oh, they're affordable. Yeah, I thought so, but that one's already built.
Actually, I started here first, and it would all have to do with-
Okay, it's already, it's already built, that answers the question.
Are there Board questions?
So number three is gone.
Number, number three would not be there.
Are you paving that?
No.
Oh, okay, I thought you said it was going to be packing. I thought you said it was going to be packing.
It is, but you can do other things other than pave.
Right, I'm just asking, since you're going to be paving.
We're going to landscape it, you know, I, we want to make it put in between here, so, you know, just do some screening, I have, I have some ideas, you know, I've done a lot of things, we've done, not permeable pavers, but I've, I've used permeable pavers on coastal zones in, in Situate and that places, but they have, they have great type of things that you can actually grow grass through, and they come in fire glass, or they come in concrete, you can do the number of things that, you know, that lets the water come through and permeate. I'm going to fence the area out with split rail fence, just small, like, just to make it, you know, characterized as a parking space.
And where is the, the bus stop thing?
Well, the kiosk is here, right here.
It's up there, okay.
Yeah, and it's actually a mail kiosk, you know, because we-
Is it both?
I wanted to be both in the board, actually, the ZVA moved it from here, I had it over here, then they moved it down here, and the bus won't, the bus, they won't go there. They won't go down the street.
That's what I was thinking, Lot 3 might be doable for it, but-
Anyone want to come off the road?
This is already, oh.
No, I meant warehouse 3 was, could have been a bus stop, but-
The bus doesn't want to come off the road, isn't it?
It doesn't want to come off the road.
Yeah, so you couldn't really-
It can't go into a private thing.
Just, we struggled with this before, what is the actual technical name of that lattice stuff?
The what?
The lattice that you can put, the grass grows through, but you can still park on?
Oh, doesn't Jerry have this?
I have it.
He has it in his, but it's not-
I put it in 20 years ago.
Yeah.
It was concrete, this thing.
Yeah, but what, what's the name, the, the term for that? I know it's at Jerry's house, and I, I've seen the grass grow completely through it.
I forgot, storm tech or something.
It's, I know they have it in Situate Precast, you can get it, there's a number-
There's multiple ones, but I said, we just never got the actual term, and I suppose-
They even have a lot configuration.
Yeah, I know. I'm aware of it. I don't, my friend knows the name, and I have forgotten it.
I'm using it in one, because it's a tight, it's tight in there in the driveway.
Well, we've conditioned it in the past, and we don't even know the technical name for it.
Oh, lattice work.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I'll make a move, a motion to approve the request as an insubstantial change. A second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? That's approved. Next, we have zoning administrator updates.
So we had a request from Four Nichols. They had a permit from 2019 to rebuild a rear deck, but they were reducing it in size. They now requested that be amended to allow a roof above to provide some shield from the sun. So we did grant that, the setbacks all comply, single story. And then 15 Ipswich, they had a request for a storage room in the basement, it's non-habitable space per the Board of Health, and because it's in a flood zone, it can't be used as habitable space, so we did grant them storage space in the basement with a condition that they not use it as habitable. Sort of piggybacking on this development at 511 Brick Hill, now known as Josiah Path, you may have heard some discussion, there is a church next door, a portion of that property is proposed for a Y, that is with Cape Cod Commission at this point in time, it will go through Planning Board, and we'll wind up with you at some point in time. So we have encouraged, because there's a long substantial shared lot line, that hopefully there will be some meeting of the minds, so that, you know, the, all these new homes are not impacted by the Y, albeit that they will. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you. Board discussion? Board updates?
On the discussion part, we had it tonight, now our next hearing is until 8:00, correct?
Correct.
And we received an indication that a continuance was going to be asked for, but it wasn't put on the agenda as such, so we're basically wasting time here. I think that maybe we might want to look at that, so, the next time, because we're going to be twiddling our thumbs here for half an hour, totally unnecessary, because this continuation wasn't asked for in an efficient manner, or, I, I don't know how to word this, but I think you understand what's going on.
No, the, you're absolutely right, we're going to end up with dead time, because the way we wrote the agenda this evening, specifically we're at 8:00.
So I will take blame for that. The purpose that we-
We were looking to hang you.
Separated the times was because I was concerned that if there were a substantial number of butters, that we would not have the capacity to hold all the interested parties. So I recommended that we split the time, so that if there were too many butters, we would not have two different 40Bs worth of butters trying to squeeze into the room such that we couldn't even hold a hearing. So, but what we have done going forward is we've now rescheduled them both, or the intent is to schedule them both at the same time. So that if you're done with one, you can start with the next. But it was strictly to accommodate whatever audience members we may or may not have. And moving forward, we don't know. You occasionally get applications where you get neighborhoods full of people that attend, and you get other cases where no one comes. We can't always know ahead what's going to happen. So we're trying to accommodate for those things, but, yeah, as far as tonight went, so because we had already continued to a date and time certain, even though we knew that the applicant intended to continue, we couldn't move the other case up, because we had pre-announced the date and time, and the-
Okay.
You're not allowed, once you make an announcement, to change that.
Got you.
You can start later, but you can't start earlier.
But had, oh, so we, I was going to say, because it's, you know, the, the agenda goes out on, you know, a week before, I, okay.
Yeah, it's not, not only that, but at the previous hearing, we announced 8:00 PM, so we couldn't even amend it, because it had been announced. But, so that was, it was the perfect storm of bad circumstances, and fortunately, we had a robust-
But you bet your eye on this now.
Fortunately, we had a robust open meeting agenda to get us through an hour, so.
So do we do a temporary adjournment?
Yeah, we'll take, well, one more thing of future agenda items, and then, yeah, we'll take a recess for 30 minutes until 8:00, because we're not, we can't do any other business until then. So, is there anything on future agenda items?
No, we have enough.
Yes. So we'll take a recess until the next scheduled hearing at 8:00 PM. We'll get a lot of dead time on FCTV. All right, it is 8 o'clock. We are back in session. Next up, we have hearing 04224, Acapescot Gardens LLC, 0 Acapescot Road, Lot 398, and 0 Old Bayberry Lane, Lot 520 in East Falmouth. Requesting a comprehensive permit to construct six duplex buildings totaling 12 units, of which three units will be affordable. Do we have any additional, I know we have received the requested waivers from the applicant. Do we have any other additions to the file? For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. Nick Marioni for the applicant. The waiver request you received was revised from the original application, and it reflects the changes to the plan, which now show guest parking in the, in the center area here. We took out the community garden. Moved the play area, the activity area, over to this corner here. And, uh, we're gonna, when we get to revising the landscape plan, after you, and the peer review people have had a chance to review everything, we're gonna put benches and walkways back in the center area to try and make it some sort of a gathering area for the residents. But the additional parking changed the luck, the coverage of parking pavement and buildings, so that's why we had to revise the waiver request. So we've added 10 additional parking spaces for guests and residents. That's pretty much the changes to the, to the site plan.
Questions from the board? Start with you, Frank.
Um, well, thank you for that, for the new plan, but I don't have any questions at the present time, and I think, like you, I'm waiting to hear the peer review comments before we get into any more detail.
Mark, questions for you?
Uh, no, I appreciate the parking spaces. It was obviously needed. And, other than that, I echo Frank's comment, and pass it on to you.
Uh, Mr. Marioni, I thank you for the addition of the parking. I agree with that. I see the addition of the handicap spot. Is it your intention to make, I guess, duplex number five, is that gonna be a handicapped accessible building, or...
No.
Just, okay, I just...
No, it, it, we'll make any building that somebody needs a handicap accessible, we'll meet whatever needs they have, whether it's hearing impaired, we'll put in whatever they need for, to accommodate that for hearing impairment. If they need a ramp, we'll give them a wheelchair ramp. But, the important part is, inside the units, they're already set up with two 8 doors, and bathrooms and bedrooms, and, uh, they can get a wheelchair in once they're inside. Of course, if they need to get in, we'd have to provide that access for them. But there's no sense putting a ramp in if they don't need it, so...
Thank you. Does he have a question?
No, that sounds good.
Scott?
Uh, now that you took the community garden in, should you change the name from Acapescot Gardens to something else?
We didn't change the name, no.
Kidding. Um, there was some discussion, of which I wasn't here. All right, is it all rentals, all affordable? I just wanted to...
It's all rentals. At the filing to you, 25% are affordable. We've also filed with the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to make them all affordable. That filing, the application is in, our letter of intent was already approved previously.
Okay.
So the application's in, and I think their hearing is the 26th.
Okay. Does the rentals, they would all count to the shot, so...
Right, perfect. Okay, I just, uh... There was some mention at the last meeting of the units looking a little bit like a circa 1940 units. Any more, again, any more thought process? And I know we don't need to get into it tonight, but just wanted to reiterate that, optionality.
I do, I don't agree that the units look like circa 1940, but there is being thought put into trying to make some improvements to the elevations without affecting the cost, allowing us to make the numbers still work as affordable units. If we had more market rate units, that would be a different story. We'd be getting a lot more rent for them. But, it's, it's a balancing act, but we are looking at that. And by the time I come back next time, we'll have, hopefully, different elevations. And if we have peer review comments back, and it looks like this plan is gonna fly in its present form, I'll have a revised landscape plan, and I'll meet with the neighbors again to go over buffering.
And, and again, I apologize, but there was never any thoughts to potentially running a water line down Old Bayberry? Just that never made any sense from a development perspective?
Water department thinks that the looping it around the cul-de-sac is sufficient.
Okay.
The, the engineers met with the water department to make sure that, no one wants to come out in Old Bayberry. The residents over there now don't want us to come out. We don't wanna go that way.
Right.
It's the most damaging of even more trees coming down, so...
Perfect, all right. Um, and obviously, you heard the traffic, traffic, traffic. Okay, great. Thank you very much. We'll wait to, some more information from the peer reviews. Thank you. Tony?
Um, thank you for potentially taking some time to look at the elevations again. I very much appreciate that. Um, I wanna ask a couple of que, you, I know it's not time to get into waivers or anything that, but there is, there are potential issues I think it's important to discuss now, early on. When you ask for a waiver regarding the coastal pond overlay district, because there aren't five lots or five acres, you actually have seven structures that would normally require seven lots. So it's not as, I'm just looking for comment on this, I'm not... Sometimes we have to look at things just outside the box. And I am, am probably gonna be wrong on this, but the, because there aren't physically five lots, there are seven units that would normally require it. So nothing changes with regard, if I have some lines that create five lots, and have structures in them, or I have seven structures that just have just one property line, in this case here. So, in my mind, you have the five lots plus. Now, let's assume for a minute that this board decides, or somebody decides, that that is really appropriate, what I'm talking about here. Then, the coastal pond overlay district issue about producing less nitrogen, and I'm gonna get into the sewer issue in a minute, would then apply here. Uh, and I'm trying to be as clear as I can. When, what I don't understand about the sewer, the new sewer coming down the street is, and maybe you know what's going on, is what I do understand, I'm sorry, what I do understand about the capacity here in town at the treatment plant is, there isn't enough capacity, but maybe there's enough capacity to include Acapescot? Do you know this for a fact?
I don't, and I don't claim to know, just because they say five or six years on a sewer line, that that's gonna happen either.
This is my point I'm gonna make, and, and, 'cause I don't know it. I haven't talked to the folks down there. Five to six years is a long time. You're in an overlay district, you're asking for a waiver, and the reason I'm bringing this up now, because I think it's a very important consideration that could potentially cost money for the project. If this board determined that we shouldn't waive the coastal pond overlay district, for whatever the reasons may be, and we said, "Well, you're gonna have to make sure that you can prove to us," I, I forget the wording here, it would be, "What could you do to reduce or eliminate adding nitrogen load?" All right? We don't know if the town has the capacity at the sewer station, at the treatment plant. We don't know for sure when they'll actually put the sewer line in. So you got probably five to six years of adding, well, we don't know when you're gonna start, of adding nitrogen to the overlay district. So I just want this board to consider, and for you, the applicant to consider, that maybe that waiver won't happen, and maybe you're gonna have to show that you're not gonna add any more nu, uh, nitrogen load to the overlay district before the sewer system goes in. I just bring that up, because if that were the case, that would cost you money to do that. So, I don't know what the answer is to that.
Well, I guess, my response to that would be that if that condition were imposed on us, it would create an economic situation that I don't believe you can impose on us. I don't think so.
I, and I don't know the, and I, I don't know the answer to that question. And I bring it up because, as you consider all the things you have to consider as a developer at this point in time, the expenses involved, whether it be changing elevations, all of that, is, maybe you might wanna consider that, there's something you're gonna have to respond to. It's not necessarily building denitrification systems, it's proving that what you are building isn't going to add to the nitrification load of the overlay district. All you have to do is prove that you don't have, you're not doing that.
Well, I think, we can't prove that we don't add to it. I think...
Yeah, you can.
Septic systems do add to it.
But how much? Again, I don't have the answers. I'm just a board member here. I see it as an issue coming up in the future. I want you to know that I'm gonna bring it up again, and would you just take a look at that, just in case? That's all, just in case.
It's an important issue, too.
Yes.
And I think, I think it's one that needs to be addressed, probably more on a, a global basis in town with, with searing.
I, I not, don't disagree, but it's five or six years or more. Who knows what our budgetary issues will be in this town, and when that sewer system might go in, or when they may expand the capacity at the sewer treatment plant. And I think this board has to consider all of that, and not to make it unaffordable for this, because we want this type of housing. But these are important considerations. Our drinking water is extremely important, you know that.
It is.
So, I'm just bringing it up for your consideration. Thank you.
The board has imposed or required D nights and other 40Bs, so I think that it may be helpful to be, you know, to at least run the numbers to show why it would make the project uneconomical.
Yeah, they've been running on numerous projects already, as we've had waivers in the past, so we, we pretty much have what the numbers are, and the, between the peer review and other consultants, Norine is used, you can get them again.
Just getting the sense that that might be, that's something that's gonna be asked of you, just to show, or, it's gonna be imposed, and you'll have to show it to the hack, but it is, it's definitely a local concern, a significant local concern. Mark?
Um, assuming everything goes swimmingly here, when, you know, optimistically, when would you break ground on this?
Uh, probably 45 days after approval, if there's no appeal, so 15 days after an appeal period expired. We've already gotten our contracts in for the site work, so we've started site work prior to getting final approval, and we should have final approval by the time the site work's done. That's the way it's worked on some other projects, so...
Okay, I'm just curious, 'cause there is, you know, a urine diversion test, I mean, we're, we're behind on it, but it's...
Is that the urine diversion test?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
That's an interesting subject, huh?
It's, it's a simple, it's a no-brainer. I mean, it would really have an effect, but it's, you're just not falling in the window of...
No, but we're, we're paying attention to that, if, if that's an easy way out. You know, we're certainly looking at it, you know?
It's, uh, well, whatever, it's, it's moving forward finally, but, um, it really is, in my mind, a no-brainer. But, anyway, like I said, you're not gonna fit in that window. Actually, there's a neat chance that you might.
There is, yeah.
Yeah. That, that's all. I'm, I'm looking forward to that, though, 'cause we definitely need something other than big type sewer in a lot of areas.
Part that's most confusing to me on that is, what do you do with the, you, you...
Pump it out, and farmers take it. I mean...
Okay. Yes, we're, we're following that, it's very interesting.
Seventy to eighty percent of the nitrogen is, is there. And it's, and the phosphorus as well, which is...
Do they know what the costs are yet of those toilets?
Cheap, I mean, you know, and it's simple. You, you would basically pull a small diameter hose like you, like you would a wire, and then you just have a, a tank, and then they draw it out. I mean, they're, they're doing it, um, other places, but it's, it's moving forward here.
I'll, I'll look into that some more by the next meeting, too.
There, there'll be lots of information after town meeting.
Norine, time-wise, what is the next date we're gonna be looking at, and where are we in terms of taking peer reviews on?
Uh, so we did hear back from the peer engineer today with a final proposed contract that's gone to town council for review and town manager for signature. We did give a prospective date to the engineer, so that he'd be able to attend the next hearing as well. Given the fact that we have as many cases as we do right now, and July is effectively a three-week month due to the holiday, we're scheduling for August 1.
Anyone on the board have any follow-up questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none. Public comment? Yeah.
Joe Baker, 56, Old Bayberry. I'd just like to reiterate a couple points that we made at the previous meeting on this issue. Number one, we, and, and, we talked earlier before the meeting started, we are strictly against anything coming down Old Bayberry. We understand that's currently not the plan, and we appreciate that very much. We don't want any surprises, so we'll continue to, for as many more public meetings as there are, we'll continue to say that. The other issue that we brought up, and we had a letter signed that the board, the, you may not have yet, by the neighbors, which said, "We would like, instead of fence, shrubs, fence, we would like fence and shrubs contiguous around the whole property." It serves as a buffer for sound, and I found out tonight it's gonna be a six-foot fence. I'm not sure it needs to be a six-foot fence, unless there's some other ordinance I'm not aware of. And then, all the neighbors support this housing going there, but at the same time, we just wanna make sure that our property is considered fully. 56 Old Bayberry is right here, and, and we'll get into the traffic thing, 'cause we wore that out last week, last month. But that's, that's our point. If you're gonna put a fence up, let's say 24 feet, and then just put shrubs, and then another 24 feet, I'm not in that business, but that's a cost issue. It's not a, it's not gonna look better or worse, but that's for the board to decide. That's, that's what the neighbors feel, and we have a, like I said, we had a letter that we circulated around the neighborhood to that effect, so, that's what I, thank you.
Any questions?
Sure.
So the height of the fence, you're saying, instead of six, you would like something higher, is that...
No, 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 not at all. I'm, I'm...
Just on the height?
I didn't know what the height was, 'cause I did, the last time I didn't ask, and, so we're not asking, what, uh, we're not saying build an enclosure to keep something in or something out, that's not the issue.
No, for sound, is what...
Well, part of it's for sound, and obviously, the, the shrubbery would affect that, from my perspective, and this is just me, I can't speak for any of the neighbors. It doesn't have to be a six-foot fence, it could be a four-foot fence, or a five-foot fence, something like that. I don't want it, I don't want it to borrow the phrase that they mentioned, I, we don't want it to look like a prison, you know? Those are, these people are gonna be our neighbors, and that's all well and good for us. And that's what, that's what the town needs, low-income, excuse me.
Affordable.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
We recognize the need.
I just want clarity, because it's very important what the butters have to say about what they think they need. You're looking for more sound deadening than encapsulation of these houses. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
So, you're trying to, you're asking for this, the applicant to create something, whatever that something is, that would contain the sound of whatever's happening with...
that something is, that would contain the sound of whatever's happening within there, not to go across property lines? Is that?
In a general sense.
So it's, it's not that you're looking for a continuous linear line of fencing. You'd, you'd be happy with some, some landscaping that does something, some fencing that does something. It's not one thing or the other. I'm, I'm not an expert in, in sound deadening.
No, I'm, nor, nor am I. Our, our idea of perfection is a fence with shrubbery the whole way. You know, shrubbery for the sound deadening, and the fence for the delineation, if you will. I mean, they're, that's woods over there, you know?
This, this area all here is woods and beehives, and there's 10 acres of open land there.
And where are you in relationship to this?
Right, right here. Old Bayberry comes right down here.
Yes, oh, yeah.
And this is Acapescot.
Yeah, this is all woods here. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, so just for the board's information, I happened to find this out today, that area that you're talking about that has a strip of land that accesses it, and then there's essentially a large area that's undeveloped within the neighborhood. There is an 11-unit subdivision that will be before the planning board for that property.
For roughly over here, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, so it will include one lot that comes off Old Bayberry, and then the others will be, I believe, accessed, they're calling it Lewis, so maybe they're going to come in off Lewis Street.
Yeah, Lewis.
Lewis.
Right. But so, so the woods that are there are likely to be developed.
No, I, and.
So obviously, you know, that may affect, that will affect the shared lot line with part of this project as well.
No, I understand.
So, but I will also say, for everybody's edification, I'm also not a sound expert, but having been working in zoning for as many years as I have, a fence is not going to maintain sound. I mean, it does a little bit of buffering, but essentially the way sound works is it just carries, right? So if you have a stockade fence and kids are playing and yelling, you're still going to hear them. You may not see them if you have a six-foot fence, but I, I do agree that if you have some, some combination of fencing and landscaping, that you will get some of a better buffer.
Yeah, no, I, my vision of the fence, without knowing what's actually planned, is it'd just be a, you know, wire mesh fence. Maybe, but if it's going to be something different, that's, I'm, my personal opinion, I can't speak for the rest of the neighbors, is I'm agnostic about what the fence looks like, you know, realistically, so. But my question to your point about that one, the future development, so they're going to have access off Old Bayberry?
Well, it looked like one lot.
One lot.
Proposed to front on Old Bayberry because there's that long stretch of land.
Right.
That then hits that open area.
Right.
So I think what they're going to do is take that long stretch, which you kind of see part of here.
Yeah.
And they're going to cut that so that one lot would front off Old Bayberry, and then the rest would front off of, I guess, Lewis.
I think it's Lewis, yeah.
But he can see that in the planning board office. If it's an application up for review, it's going to be in that table if you go to the planning board office.
Or it's, it's available online as well.
He's going to say, you can do it online, yeah.
Okay. I mean, there is a, it's not a, I mean, you can drive down it, there's, so there's 56, there's the next-door neighbors, and then there's a road, if you will. It's not, it's not paved, and Old Bayberry is a private road. Yeah, so that goes back into there, that accesses the 10 acres or whatever it is, so. Our, our concern on anything else going on Old Bayberry is the fact that it's a private dirt, 18-foot ride road, so, thank you.
Any additional public comment?
My name is Frances Jimelo, and I live at 75 Acapescot Road. I think that the six places are too much for that lot. I don't see how you're going to put those six duplexes, 24 cars, 10 guests, and other things. I don't see where it's big enough. I think we're going to suffer for that. We have a nice, quiet street, Aranda Acapescot, and I think we're going to pay dearly for that. Three would be enough. And I know that Diane and I, Diane and I talked about that the other day, and most of the neighbors feel that three would be plenty. Just too much in one, one little place.
Pretty hard to divide that by four. It's kind of hard to divide that by four and get a 25%.
Three.
Yeah.
Said three, three duplexes would be enough.
Yeah, well, that's six units.
Hmm, that's enough.
Has to be divisible by four.
Well, they'd have to work that out, I don't know. But I think it's too, too much. I think that it's going to really impact our neighborhood, because everybody that I've talked to do not like the idea of six. We were going to put 24 cars and then 10 guests. I don't understand it. That's my feelings.
Thank you. So our continuing date is August 1st at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Here at Town Hall?
Yes.
The request? All right, is there a motion to continue this to August 1st, 6:00 PM here at Town Hall?
Motion to continue to August 1st at 6:00.
Okay. Second, Suzanne, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is a vote. We are continued. And that concludes everything on this evening's agenda.
Amplifying.
It's now amplifying.
Well, you do want to make the announcement about your next hearing.
Have something with your electric stove. Hold on. Hold on. Oh, Mark, he was making an announcement. No, Jim was going to make an announcement.
Oh, sorry. Next scheduled public hearing is June 20th, 2024, 6:00 PM at the Select Board's meeting room.
Right, just so, just as a reminder to anybody who's interested in Sandwich Road, that we will not be at Lawrence School, and we will be here.
Person here at Town Hall, not at the Lawrence School. So there being no other business for the board, is there a motion to adjourn until June 20th, 6:00 PM? Mr. Fenner, is there a second? Suzanne, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. It is 8:20.
Good job, man.